Here we need a mover and a secondary to resume the special meeting of council. Moved by councillor Van Oostbein. Seconded by councillor Foster. And being resolved that, the special meeting of council hereby resumes at 8:55. Over here. Sorry, I'm still trying to get my... Okay, so we have a motion for the appointments of people to boards and committees. I need a mover. Councillor Hayden. And I need a secondary. Okay, the motion reads that being resolved that, the following board committee appointments are hereby accepted. The committee of adjustment, we will be appointing two members to that committee. And council will be looking reviewing the terms of reference for that committee, which is what we are appointing to. Debbie Graham and Brian Rich, or Reece Rich, I think, Brian Rich. To the hydro board, we will be appointing Doug Blot and Ron DeWesley. To the library board, we will be appointing Sylvia Boulanger, Evelyn Devoe, Debbie Graham, Alan McCullough, Brian Rich. And to nonprofit housing board, we will be appointing Gary McPherson and Alan McCullough. And to the police services board, Eve Carey. All in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. Okay, we will be carrying on with the regular agenda. So is there any items that anyone wishes, any questions submitted in the present agenda? Nope, I'm caught on that. We have to go back to our question period.
I think I'll wait till the next meeting. It's kind of long.
That's good, I know. Thank you, and we look forward to hearing from you from the next meeting. Anybody else for question period? Okay, we will continue then with the consent agenda. Is there any items that anyone wishes to be submitted? Okay, so we will... Help me out with this place. Move in second. So then we have to go again, but let's read it out. Wait, sorry. Process check at this time of the night. You need a mover and a secondary to go through the items on the consent agenda. By councillor Van Oostbein. Secondaire. Councillor Hayden. Okay, so we'll just... Okay, we have motion, be resolved that items A1, 2, F2 inclusive, contained in part one of the consent agenda, be adopted. So, we'll run through the list now. Anything anyone wishes to discuss from the adoption minutes, A1 or A2. Okay, and comments on any board committee reports? We have Estonville Public Library meeting events on November 15th, November 12th, and November 20th. We have joint advocacy committee meeting on November 1st and December 6th. Community Services Committee meeting as of December 18th. Corporate Services Committee meeting on January 8th. There are no matters arising from any camera sessions at the last meeting. Businesses arising from board committee reports. D1, recommendation regarding the health, health policy. D2, recommendation regarding budget deliberations. Item D3, recommendation regarding health intervention. Item D4, recommendation regarding the rate of pay provision policy. Item D5, recommendation regarding unemployment salary. Okay, bylaws and resolutions. E1, bylaw number 2891/18. And bylaw number 2881/19. Bylaw 2890/19. And lastly, bylaw number 2890/19. Okay, we have two reports that we received. Administrative Minister Polo analyzing 2017 financial indicators for the town of Espinola. And the last one is the post-2018 release report. Okay, all in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, so now we're moving to our regular agenda. Item G1, I believe a mover.
It's okay, we can get it done.
So I need a mover and a secondary for item number G1, bylaw 2888/19. Moved by councillor Foster. Seconded by councillor Hayden. Okay, the motion needs to be resolved that, bylaw number 2888/19 be adopted. Being a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy and payment of interim taxes for the year 2019. Okay, I'll just mention, this is a bylaw that gets passed every year. It allows the municipality to send out tax bills for the first half of the year based on the levy from last year. And then what that allows us to do is be able to set the budget, go to all our budget, go version, set the budget, and then potentially if we need to change the levy in the last chapter. Any comments? Okay, all in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, item G2, it is to reschedule the meeting from January 29th to November 1st. Need a mover and a secondary, so we need to move on this for discussion. Moved by councillor Justice. And a secondary councillor... Sorry, I had a little brain breeze there. Okay, be resolved that the regular meeting of council is scheduled for Tuesday, January 29th at 7:00 PM. Be rescheduled to Tuesday... Is that what we said? Sorry, to Thursday. Okay, good. Thursday, January 31st, 2019 at 7:00 PM. The reason for this motion is our deputy mayor, Bill Foster, myself, and our CIO, really traveling to Roma. We have asked for those delegations, but we have not heard whether we've received them yet. So with the three of us being away, I, the mayor, the deputy mayor, we're over different questions at the meeting. We scheduled a Thursday. Any other comments? And it's just for the one meeting. Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, our next motion, or next agenda item is G3. I need a mover and a secondary. This is moved by councillor Van Oostbein. Secondary please. Councillor Mott. Okay, and motion needs to be resolved that council for the town of Espinola supports the Town of Kirkland Lakes resolution regarding Northern Ontario's natural resource revolution program, adopted December 18th, 2018. Councillor Van Oostbein opened reviews, and she requested this to be put on the regular agenda just ahead of the meeting.
I agree with that. We should keep our natural resources in more than in the north.
Okay. Hope this makes sense, we didn't say anything else. So this is basically for people that are taking a look at the agenda for this. It's for people Kirkland Lake has passed a resolution for the Ontario government to make sure that the resources for the province often come from Northern Ontario, but sometimes we forget the spending in Northern Ontario. So it's just kind of an encouragement not to forget Northern Ontario and their allocation of money. So we are going to, we pass this motion that will support that resolution. All in favor? Awesome, it's carried. Okay, the next motion is for the town of Council to opt out of homers. Need a mover and a secondary. What's that?
There's no motion, it's just for discussion.
It's for discussion, and if council chooses, there will be a motion.
Ah, okay. So I'm just looking at the motions that are coming up. So this is, as we go for discussion, this was brought up by one of our councillors that wanted us to take a look at opting out of the homers pension plan. And basically, if we were to opt out, it would affect us being that we would not be collecting pensions from the municipality, and we would all have to sign some answer that, in fact, we would have to have a hundred and fifty minutes agreement to be able to opt out. And so there's, I'll open this up for anybody else. Councillor Van Oostbein.
I was the one that brought it up at one of our prior meetings, but at corporate services, and it was explained that it was an all or none. I have no intention to stop anyone else from receiving a pension. I thought I, as a single person, could do that, but I'm not able to. So I won't stand in any of it, anybody else's way.
Okay, so if we don't actually bring this to a motion, it's just, it will require it and you have an answer? Okay, so the next few items also are, thank you for coming, are items for discussion. And then we have motions based on where we want to go when it's that discussion. Okay, so the next one is the wine recommendation regarding cannabis retail stores. So councillor, corporate services committee meeting had a presentation from Jamie McKenzie. He is interested in opening a store in Espinola, so he came to corporate services to see if they had any questions for him. There are a number of questions that were asked. He provided some details, most of those details we already have, through a variety of information that's been presented to us. We had also asked for an analysis versus an opt-in or opt-out options. So we have that, and I would open the floor to comments. Councillor Foster.
Okay, I did a little bit of extra research, and you know, basically we have three choices, either opt in, opt out, and some people, some communities are opting out, but they'd be thinking about maybe moving in later once they have more information. I haven't been certain accessibility, if the cannabis is too accessible, that the consumption would go up and affect the social problems. I've done it, gone and done some research, and I looked at Colorado, that switched in 2014, Oregon, Portugal switched around 1999. And I've got some conclusions out of that, which will surprise me. Studies show that very little increase in marijuana use after legalization. Changes in marijuana laws have not been found to have a significant impact on rates of adult use. And about 10% of users become dependent, okay, so you know, that's there, okay. But my concern was making it too accessible, we were going to have some issues. One in the areas I was concerned about is youth, and one study shows that youth usage goes down. And I don't know if there's an increase there, but basically it's telling me that, that the number of users won't change a lot. So the option to opt out is, if the town, if the town decides to opt out, we lose about $6,000, $6,000 a year in revenue. But we also lose revenue, provincial revenue beyond $100 million. And looking at the amount marijuana they expect to sell a year, and looking at the excise tax, our portion of that would be about $60,000 to $70,000 a year. So if we forego that, that's a pretty significant hit. If it becomes less convenient to purchase cannabis, it might lead to lower consumption, but it'll lead to more black market consumption, and you don't know what you're performing with that cannabis. If you opt in, you don't lose about $75,000 in revenue. You don't control where the retail outlets are, but you have to hope that the province isn't allowed to go anywhere, and there are some indications now. Residents, if we buy from a certain retail store, will get good quality material, at least it won't be dangerous for you. But it may lead to slightly higher consumption. Retail outlet will provide some jobs in the community. So in final analysis, I think, even though I don't like the thought of legalizing marijuana, that for us, we can't stop the genes out of the bottle, and it's probably not going to hurt us if we have a retail store anytime, not going to make a big difference.
Just to, if I may further add to what you have said about the black market. These forces in Sepulveda are telling the educators in Sepulveda that what's being laced in the black market marijuana is potentially making, it's causing death, and it's also causing higher addiction rates because they're lacing it with the stronger drugs. We really don't want that around. I personally don't agree with marijuana use, but as you said, the genes out of the bottle, we've got to be, we've got to be responsible, we've got to be wise. We've got to try to protect our kids as best as possible. And I really don't want to see them losing that black market stuff. We don't want to see lots of them. It's coming fast, and we've got to help protect their use. Any other comments?
Go ahead. I have the president's proposal, councillor Van Oostbein, I'll sign this. Your hand go up.
I hear where you're coming from, and it's true, but we are concerned about the youth, and the youth aren't supposed to have it in the first place. So whether it's legalized or it's not legalized, they are still accessing it, and as long as they're under 18, it's all illegal that they are getting. Like, that's 100%, absolutely. So I think a lot of our concern should be, where's the enforcement on some of this to get it off the streets and out of the schools in the first place? But if I can speak on that?
We'll go in order, if you don't mind.
So I, in lots of ways, would much prefer that we opt out at this point and see the effects, say, six months or a year from now. They have no statistics showing what is or isn't going to happen, none. I believe that if we opted out, somewhere, Trace, Paulie, you couldn't tell me if I'm wrong, wasn't there an option that we could go in for a study group? If we opted out, wasn't the province looking for some municipalities to do a study on the effects? I thought I read that in there.
I can't confirm at this point.
So myself, I would prefer to opt out and see what's going on, and then if things go forward and later on opt in, that I realize the financial cost that it could be to us. But for myself, I would rather err on the side of caution.
Okay, councillor Justice.
I think it's a fear more than a reality. It's not a federal law. They didn't handle that right, and the province didn't handle that right, is the article from a very good rule, it's a very good article. And then it leaves it up to us, it also brings business into the town. Some big cities like Markham, I think Mississauga, opted out, but what I saw there was, it was, they didn't have control of where retail stores go. That's the biggest problem, and we don't either, turn it to the, I'll call the gaming commission, but that's, so is the LCBO. So, you know, I look at, it'll just come in and be a normal part of life in a few years, as we have the beer store, LCO, we go and book convenience stores and buy cigarettes. So I'm not, I don't have any fear of this, I think you should go ahead.
Okay. Sorry.
By opting in, I feel that by the time it gets to us, it's going to be a good year, year and a half, in, at the best, by the time Espinola gets to see this. So things have, will evolve and will change, and more regulations will be put in, and I'm sure the government will have better understanding of smaller communities too. So by opting in, we're just opening up our door, but it's not going to be for, you know, probably a year, year and a half, so.
Okay, I will comment on this as well. I also have concern about cannabis, being a teacher, that's something that we see in the, of the effects of that. But I also agree with councillor Hayden. If the cannabis that they're accessing, and they've been accessing it for decades, it's not as if it's something new. If the cannabis that they are accessing is actually a safer source of cannabis, that would be better. A lot of students do fund their parents' stash, and take from their parents' stash. And if their parents aren't getting it from a legal source, then chances are, it will be a cleaner, safer cannabis for them to be, to be using. No matter which way, whether we opt in or opt out cannabis, will, youth will get their hands on cannabis. And I don't think making a decision based on that is really going to have any lasting effect. One of the things that we could do, the money that we get, we're going to get initially a first installment of about $6,000. We can designate that money to go towards education, educational campaigns, designed for keeping access to cannabis out of the hands of youth, promoting what the laws are regarding that, because there is some confusion, so that's something that we could do proactively as a council. And I am concerned about if we opt out now and opt in later, that the provincial government is really tying their hands in terms of access to funding. And I don't think that would be a good idea. I'm in favor of opting in now. And based on what I've heard, I actually have two motions out here. One is an opt-in motion, and one is an opt-out motion. Based on what I heard, I am, this is a conservative motion, I'll choose the opt-in motion. If that gets defeated, then we have a second motion formally to opt out. So we'll start with the opt-in motion. I need a mover and a secondary for this motion. Okay, moved by councillor Foster. Seconded by councillor Mott.
Okay, so I made the full motion. Be resolved that, whereas recreational cannabis became legal in Canada on October 17th, 2018, and whereas the Ontario government has introduced legislation that dictates retail cannabis outlets will be privately operated, but licensed and regulated by the Alcohol and Gaping Commission of Ontario, and whereas municipalities will have the option to opt out of hosting retail outlets within their respective geographic boundaries, and we require that municipal councils pass a resolution and advise the ACGO, named GCO, by January 22nd, 2019, and whereas if a municipality decides to allow cannabis retail stores within its jurisdiction anytime before January 22nd, 2019, the AGCO should be notified as soon as possible. Therefore, be it resolved that the Corporation of the Town of Espinola advises that the AGCO has its intention to opt in to allow retail cannabis stores in the town of Espinola. All in favor? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, item G6, sorry. This is again for discussion. And it is regarding the budget presentation. So we had, this started, came about through a discussion that happened at corporate services. In terms of whether we would be going a one-by-one through budget versus kind of an overall presentation of every department, what the programs are within the department, as that had a higher level. And there was a discussion, and there was some suggestions by councillor about different ways that we could talk about this. So we thought we would give this to the entire council to have a discussion and to make a decision on it. I have circulated to the RAS, to the document that came from the Municipal World Magazine, dated December 2018, so it was a very recent issue. It just was very ironic that I opened up this kind of a day after our corporate services, and then found this article on new council members who states you can make a decision to adopt it. And the second one was asked if the budget needed to be done with the one by one basis. Okay, and the reason for that is, as a governance body, it is our job to make sure that we understand what are the services that are provided by the municipality. We make decisions, or do we have the right services and the right level of service that the municipality provides? Is there services that we are providing that are not being used? We have a very, very high level role and responsibility within the organization to take a look at what we do as a municipality. And then it comes up to our managers that we have in place to make the decision based on any budget that we allow them to spend. So the, the look at the things from a line by line, sometimes it happens is you lose perspective of the entire picture of what's going on. When you get focused on, well, should we increase the honorariums there, do we increase the travel, do we increase by $500, maybe $6,000? We lose what that big picture of the entire service that we are providing to the municipality. So I have asked our CIO to prepare some information to us, and if she'd be willing to talk to us in terms of what we would see, if we were to change our process slightly from, from last year, and we have another process to try, by looking at these things at a higher level. So I'm wondering if our CIO can speak about what they're looking at here?
Well, this is just a few pages of last year's budget.
Okay.
And so specifically that if you were to look at office operations, for example, I'm limited to five columns anyways, and the detail I can provide. So we could do a three-year budget, so three of those columns are taken up with, you know, the forecasted years. And then I have one column for actual, and then the council... And then I have one column for actual and then the council recommended budget for that year. I just found last year, a lot of the questions that we got were answered because I have to print this now. And these are not really actual numbers. So I'm not, not really giving you the actual numbers anyways. I just don't feel this is the best information to provide. So I'm certainly open to hearing what, what council would like to see.
In terms of the sideways spreadsheet that we have, isn't it the one that I am familiar with? That looks at the, basically we have one historical column here and then we look at the net levy change from the budget. And then we look at what our expenditures and revenues we're projecting for 2019. This is something that I am more familiar at looking at.
And that's, that's the public document that gets posted.
And that's, so that's what we were working on before. We had talked about potentially going back, adding a couple of years historical as that was possible. So looking at, so taking out the two columns, budgeted expenditures and budgeted revenues. And just looking at the 2018 net value versus the 2017 net value and then the previous year. We talked about that, right? So if we looked at that, we would actually see changes in historical costs in terms of leading up to what the projected expenditures are this year. And I think that's a very useful thing to be looking at and at those historical costs. So we see if there's year-over-year changes that are higher than the cost of living. If we have explanations in terms of what goes in. And then each department manager would make a presentation in terms of what their department obligation is that they're requesting and what that is for. Counsel Foster, all right.
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing this, but what I suggest is that we have a book that shows the line by line, we'll keep it downstairs and if someone wants to get a little bit more detail on a particular area, they can come in and, and do, or get the conference room area and pull it out and take a look at.
That's right. I mean, we, we did talk about that. So, so if you wanted the line by line detail, that information can be printed. So it's basically the GL that can be printed, put into a liner in the conference room area. So you can see what those nine items are before you're coming in. So if something is unfamiliar to you or a program is unfamiliar to you, you can go ahead and take a look at what makes up the cost in that department. And so come and be prepared to ask questions on the budget. On, you can ask on specific line items or you can ask just based on that department presentation as a whole. But you will have access to the department managers and they will be here with knowing their budgets, what their requests are and be able to present all of the information that we would like answers to. And I'm suggesting this doesn't change a process, that it is more based on a governance model as opposed to a management model. And I think that's very, very important and be sure that we understand the distinction.
So if I get this right, you're looking at giving us 2015, 16, 17, and 18? Which years, how many years were we seeing?
Oh, I think we're going to fit those, we said that we could fit those in, right? If I take out the 2019 and 2020, I guess. You take out. Yeah, take out, take out the 2000, near the 2018 net levy. Yeah. Take out the budgeted expenditures, budgeted revenues.
Yep.
Then just add prior years in those columns to 2018, 2017, 2015, 2015.
So that would give us four years of actual spending plus the target for next year.
Yeah. And knowing that 2018 isn't necessarily completely because all of the, the things are in 2018.
That's always been the case, yeah.
Absolutely. And like, like Parciano said, that's often where the questions come from is you have time to stop and it's just because of whatever.
Well, I'm sorry, but I still maintain I want to see a line by line item. I realize you have explained your, your position. I have looked at budgets in various areas. I have done quite a few financial statements. I know the difference between estimates and actual figures. And the fact that they are accessible is wonderful. But I would like them accessible at the same table we are going through the budget because yes, I want a line by line item.
Yeah, the presentations are not going to be line by line.
I realize they will be, and that is my other comment, is that these budgets coming in, I hope they aren't being given to me Friday at noon hour for me to be able to see Tuesday night. I want to have more time than two business days to look at these budgets and what's coming in.
Do we, when do we typically?
That would be the timeline, James, come out Friday afternoon. And the budget rotation may be Tuesday night.
There's.
But that's not like to adopt the budget. That's, I mean, my presentation of the overview and the department.
I can certainly see where you would like to cut down the time that's taken. But I need to have time to be able to look at it. I know how many figures and how much is involved in these reports. And two business days with a work schedule is not feasible. So I would definitely want more of this emailed out ahead of time. You don't have to print it if you don't want to. I'm capable of printing. But I do want to see them ahead of time. If I have questions, I want to be able to ask those questions. And I still want a line by line. The more information I have ahead of time, the fewer questions I'll probably ask during deliberations. But in order for me to feel that I have met all of my fiduciary responsibility, at this point in time, I maintain I want a line by line item. Maybe next year, I won't want it solely depth. This is my first year and I need that information. For myself, for the people who represent me.
Okay, I think in terms of getting the access to the information any sooner, we have a budget schedule and our procedural bylaw states when we get the access to the information. So we know that the first presentation of the budget is.
Can you read it for us?
On Tuesday of next week. So I'm sure if you, if you want the information to look at, you can come in and have a chat with our CAO and she can present some of that information in advance. We have, these are the, the columns that are set up in our procedural bylaw. Counsel Foster.
I didn't quite hear what Cynthia said. Would she can have the disc orders now that ready for us?
Well, it should be updated by tomorrow at noon. That's not going to happen. And I can't realistically work the Excel package and add one more column to make sure we're being curious where we're going by tomorrow at noon. So that's why, you know, it generally is.
So what I'm looking for actually is what the departments are standing on. Those budgets, I would like to see what it is to go through. If you can only give me yours on Friday, that's fine, but we're going to be reviewing the departments.
Well, I prepared the whole, the whole pack.
So we don't get a package, say, from Public Works that shows us their budget?
It's all included in the one budget and.
Do you have this version right now?
I do, yes.
So if we, if, do, it won't have all the back years, but it at least have the budget items. So if we could get this tomorrow.
Yes, that would be.
And then the other part of it on Friday, then we would at least.
Have a little bit ahead of time to look at it.
More time than we need for that.
We have this in 2018. So is something that you want to start preparing questions for, looking at line items? You can come in and.
I don't have time to come in. I'd just like it emailed to me. You don't have to. I don't need a paper coffee. Just email me so I can look at it. If I want to look at it at six in the morning or 12 o'clock at night, I have that option. Because with my schedule, you find me up at all different times. So I just want the accessibility to be able to look at it. And like I said, at the actual meeting, I want it line by line.
Okay, well, I think what we'll do is we'll just, we'll go ahead with the presentations. And we're going to have to satisfy yourself, I think, because that information is going to be available to you, for you to come and look at. We don't make a practice of mailing out the general ledger to, to people in the municipality. But it will be kept in a secure area in the conference room downstairs. So you'll have to make yourself available to come and see that if you want that information on line by line.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start that budget presentation on Tuesday. Tuesday. And we're starting at 7:00 p.m. So we'll have the Community Services meeting earlier and it will be budgeted in the other, the other week. Scheduled, we, we have two sessions. And then take your thing with hopkins and you won't get group over the pub until two sessions and then it will continue on. Okay, so just continuing on with the information, correspondence that we have received. There have been no correspondence. Information that was circulated to council, the check register for December 2018. Public Health and Secondary District's correspondence regarding School of Health in Ontario, oral health programs. Congratulations on the elections. There's been some correspondence from PLS regarding the rebate. MMAH correspondence regarding the Health Disruption Plan. Ontario Good Roads Association re-nominations. Sueship Ontario correspondence. Industry funding for D-Box programs. And the Municipal World article about the council members and Ontario Good Roads correspondence, we opting in and opting out. Conference and conventions, the next one coming up is Roma, January 27th to 29th. And like I previously stated, the Counsel Foster, Deputy Mayor Foster, sorry, myself and our CAO, Ruby and Tenet, so that. And hopefully we'll hear whether we have any delegations. Okay. So what we'll do is we will go around the table and we will have any council reports. So we'll start, Counsel Foster.
Right, okay. Other than the fact that we, when we've asked for delegation to talk about here on Central, right away, the Roma Conference is a good conference. It's designed for smaller communities and could be a lot of information about legislation that's been passed. And it's going to be impactful.
Thank you. Counsel, you proceed.
I have nothing else.
Counsel Ben Hossen?
We already have a report from the Community Corporate Services, so I have nothing to add.
Okay.
But at the last meeting, we did have a letter from Constable Ford that she was looking for a resolution for. It hasn't, it's not been presented with this agenda, so I definitely want to come in and ask.
It's, it is going to the Police Services Board.
Okay.
Because they've already requested some parking spots outside of the front of the building and she wanted to bring that.
Okay.
So they're going to be considering using to their songs.
Okay.
Okay, I will have stuff. I think it's gone. I will talk about, in terms of council reports, what I would like to start seeing a little bit more is information in terms of if you've attended a board. A summary of what's going on at that oil level because it's information that should be coming back to the municipality. And as we know, it's on our agendas. Sometimes it's months before we get the minutes circulated back. So I'd like to start seeing some council reports in terms of what's going on at that. Counsel Ben Hossen, I'll be attending a D-SAB training tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's kind of a delegation to the whole D-SAB board. And then our next board meeting is on January 24th. It's a Thursday, I think that's the date.
For D-SAB?
For the D-SAB.
Yeah.
So it'll be January 28th. I'll also be attending a Police Service Board meeting along with Counsel Foster. That's this week on Thursday. So we have that coming up as well. So there's lots of things that's keeping us busy. In terms of a discussion earlier in council that you would have seen on the special meeting with council agenda, we don't have a resolution as of yet, but we did go into the camera for the purposes of talking about it. And that will be coming back to council for a resolution. So we'll be seeing that item in the back of the room.
We have a meeting Monday.
That's right. And that's, yeah, so are we of another risk management training?
It's a council orientation.
Council orientation from Ministry of Municipal Health and Housing, 5:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
I had noticed that.
Yeah, so it's on municipal and housing. It was in an email. It was in one of the.
I'll send her my results.
Okay, is there anything else? It has been a long evening this evening and thank you for going through all that. We do only motion through adjournments. Oh, yeah. So usually when we go through the consent agenda, we put the motions out, individual ones per signature. So we don't have, we didn't do that because of the special meeting interrupted everything. As well, we see a number of green sheets down there already. So if you have your green sheet still in the middle of the minutes pile, it's sent you on the table. Does what you're signing, do I have a move against you adjournment? Counsel, you proceed. Seconder for adjournment. They're by adjourned at 9:43 p.m. All in favor? Counsel adjourned at 9:43, all in favor? Actually, we'll call it a second time too. It's very hard here. I know you're all busy.